Yeah, when I came in to get my packet, I went and visited Tessa who we were on the council together. Yeah, that was nice. We're gonna try to have lunch and. Do you know Marion? Have you met Marion Turski or? Yeah, so the four of us.
I think so.
This is Ollie. Sorry, Ollie.
So he had these boards and he just hated everybody.
They couldn't, they can take them down, but because we didn't have that thing yet.
There you are. I was just texting you. Not that, not that you were late or anything.
The rest of the women still stand.
You come to all the meetings and you wear those two shirts and that all the stuff written all over.
Am I gonna, am I gonna surrogate for, for Ollie? Yeah, he's on. Um, will you guys be able to hear him and stuff? Okay, I was gonna say it's all you, Dave. Yeah. Yeah. If he talks, Dave, you get to be his surrogate.
Plus the Ollie. On my reword.
Here.
Thanks. Just uh, I'm gonna go ahead and turn over today. Mr. Long for uh. The renovation meeting for students training with.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I've been serving as a city attorney for about four months now. And I haven't had a chance to meet all of you in person. Jordan and I have spent some time talking about the need for some training uh for commissions and the council. In public meetings, public records, ethics, conflicts of interest. But tho- those turn out to be um kind of difficult topics, not that the subject matter is so extensive, but the questions end up taking a great deal of time. So we're trying to figure out a kind of efficient way to do that and maybe through some videos with the basic uh rules set out and then an opportunity in live meetings to, for you to pose questions and me to try to answer. Uh, but tonight I just want to focus on two uh fairly simple goals. First of all, just kind of the basic steps in, in getting to a planning decision. Uh, those are just reminders that I think you all know, but uh it, it pays to be reminded of them periodically. And the second a goal is to, to try to uh encourage you to use some productivity tools. Um, basically tools from um Robert's Rules of Order. So let me get started. Um. Uh, section seven of the council rules of procedure, it's a little bit long, but I'm gonna read the whole darn thing to you. Um, and then, and then try to unpack it. Uh, it says the presiding officer shall move through the order of business on the agenda. Once the agenda has uh been announced, the presiding officer shall ask for any recusals on the agenda item. Presiding officer shall then ask for a staff report if applicable. Once the staff report is completed, the presiding officer shall entertain questions and comments from the council. Once the question period is complete and the presiding officer then may invite any speakers who have filled out a speaker request form to address the council. The council may then move on to the next agenda item without taking any action, may provide uh further direction to staff or a member may make a motion to take the specific act, a specific action on the agenda item, which if seconded, begins deliberation. Quasi judicial hearings, as you know, are governed uh by some special rules uh that kind of fit uh within that umbrella that I just read to you. Uh, the uh town municipal code one ninety dot one five zero C five says participants in the appeal of a type two administrative decision or type three hearing are entitled to an impartial review authority as free from potential conflicts of interest and pre-hearing ex parte contacts as reasonably possible. As a result of that city provision and the section seven of the council rules and for similar provisions in state plan uh uh state land use planning statutes, the stages of quasi judicial hearings are pretty clearly prescribed and they're set forth in the um, in the uh, the chair's opening script uh uh that you all have, have heard before. Um. But even when we're not in a quasi judicial period, uh, the basic stages uh of, of a meeting by the planning commission are really pretty much the same. Step one, chair initiates the agenda item stating its title. Step two, members are asked if they have any actual or potential conflicts of interest. Um, and for recuses, if they have any actual conflicts of interest. Now, of course, in, in a, a quasi judicial setting, uh, you have to go further and ask about any ex parte contacts. And the applicant then has an opportunity to challenge uh what statements have been made by the members of the planning commission about their actual or potential conflicts and about their ex parte contacts. Step three, even beyond, e- even outside of a judicial here, judicial hearing, the chair asks staff for its summary uh of, of the staff report. Step four, the planning commissioners may ask clarifying questions of the staff. That's clarifying only. This is what gets confusing sometimes. It's not a place for argument. It's not a place for leading questions or expressing one's preconceived notions uh or conclusions. That's deliberation. The uh, and particularly in ex parte hearings, you, at this stage, you do not want to be talking about your preconceived notions, even if you haven't. Because that opens you up to appeal. Uh, that's a time for you to ask questions, not state views. Uh, step five, the chair opens the public hearing or outside of, you know, just in a regular hearing, not a quasi judicial hearing, uh invites public testimony. And then the planning commissioners have uh the opportunity to ask clarifying questions of the presenters. Again, clarifying only, uh no argument, leading questions. Uh, a- and if you, if you fail to recognize that barrier, you're opening yourself up to uh, to appeal. Uh, then the chair closes the public hearing or the public testimony if it's not quasi judicial. And then the planning commissioners can ask staff clarifying questions. Um, again, clarifying only because you don't want to at this stage be revealing whatever biases you might add. Uh, your opportunity to do that is in step eight when you have the opportunity to uh begin deliberation. Now, the council rules say uh deliberation uh shouldn't start until after the motion is made. That's hard. Um, and I'm not sure we don't want to change that in the future because it's often you want to kind of hear what people are thinking or hear what their concerns or questions are before you're ready to pose a motion that you think might have a good chance of, of prevailing. So it's a little bit of a gray area uh in, in the uh council rules. It does say you uh uh may provide further direction to staff. I would call that a little opening to allow the the council members or the planning commission members to uh, to weigh in and say, well, I'm thi- I'm wondering about this and thinking about this and and then help you figure out how to craft the motion that you're eventually uh going to make. And then, but at that point, after a motion is made, uh and seconded, then that's when you uh are open for real discussion. You can start saying, well, here's how I view it. And uh, and have an opportunity for real deep conversation uh before you vote. You were gonna ask a question.
Well, uh, uh, a couple times you refer, reference in the council rules procedure and so those govern us as well even though we're.
They do. Right. Yeah, but you operate under the council rules.
I also wanted to make a comment that um, the um the deliberation, um, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, is, is kind of coming out of the uh Roberts rule. So Roberts rule says uh that deliberation starts after the motion. And um, when I, I know when we revised the council rules, that was quite a discussion around that and we ended up um yeah, defaulting to what Roberts rules prescribes. Um, and it, you're right, it is challenging. It's very challenging. But I think it also maintains objectivity of the body until there's a motion that can either live or die based on the discussion or the deliberation.
It, it does help you keep that, that separation from stating your views too early.
That's right.
Um, but it is so hard to really do that and I uh, you are, as I'll tell you in just a minute. Um, you're not bound by, I mean, you, you have a statement that you are bound by uh Roberts rules. But you can change that. That's not a state requirement.
Right.
The state just requires that you have some meeting procedural rules. Um, and so you could alter that.
Yeah, we could relax the rules too. I mean, if you didn't want to follow them, yes.
And, and I think that's an area where you probably are gonna want to relax and just to that little bit, allow people to have some discussion before a motion is made. Um, so moving on to the kind of second uh goal or second thing I wanted to talk about tonight. Um, and that's these tools for productivity, particularly Robert's rules productivity uh rules and section uh one B of um of the council rules says unless otherwise provided by charter ordinance or these rules, the procedure for council meetings and any subcommittee of the city council, which would include you, uh shall be guided by Robert's rules of order. Um, the Secretary of State's manual on public meetings says rules of parliamentary procedure provide the means for orderly and expeditious disposition of matters before a board, commission or council. They govern the way members of a multi-member uh body interact with each other. And then if you look at the material that was provided to you, uh it's page five of your packet, uh also labeled page one of seven. You look at three and four there under basic principles. It's uh parliamentary procedure. Uh, number three says every member has rights that are equal to every other member. And number four says the will of the majority must be carried out and the rights of the minority must be preserved. Those are really key points. Um, I, I guess I would try to express them even more pointedly and say that the key function of Robert's rules of order uh is to provide for structured deliberation and decision making, but with flexibility based on democratic principles, uh including protection of minority rights. And these uh, uh, these principles keep the rules from becoming a rigid source of control. And I'll tell you what I mean by that. One member, under Robert's rules of order, one member has a great deal of procedural power. But once that member uh exercises that power, the group then decides by majority vote. Also important, the other sort of other side of the coin for Robert's rules is it helps you clear out the underbrush. Clear out the distractions that tend to get involved in any complicated uh decision making. And that is why I included these five handy uh parliamentary procedures that is on page three of your packet. And I want to just talk about them for just a minute. Um, and in soliciting questions you'd have about them, but I want to highlight that these are those instances of uh individual member power. Uh, number one, point of order. You can interrupt whoever has the floor to make a point of order and the chair has to respond to you. Um, the chair can uh ask for a little clarification, but not, there's no debate, there's no second required. Uh, the chair has to make a ruling. Um, and then uh, number two, there's an opportunity for an individual to interrupt and seek a ruling on that point of order that the chair has made. Uh, that does require a second um and can be debated. But again, an individual can interrupt the proceedings to say, okay, we just heard this, this uh ruling by the chair. I want to see how the whole group feels about it. The uh, the third uh one on the list is another example of an individual being able to interrupt a speaker uh without permission from the chair uh and say, I have a point of information uh or a part, I have a parliamentary inquire, inquiry uh that has to be addressed to the chair. Doesn't require a second, there's no debate. Um, uh, the only, the only bar to that is the speaker has a chance to say, I want to finish my comment uh before you uh raise that request for information. Uh, but that's not a decision by the chair. That's a decision by the speaker, whoever that may be. And then the, the final, I want to skip number four. It gets a little complicated. It's not quite on, on point that I'm trying to make and that is calling for the orders of the day. Uh, once you have a published agenda, uh that, those are, that's called the orders for the day. Um, and if the group starts to stray from that published agenda, any member can interrupt. Uh, no second is required, no debate is allowed. You can interrupt and say, I call for the orders of the day. And that obtains, that doesn't even require a rule by the chair. It just obtains unless somebody moves uh to suspend the rules. Uh, and so another individual member has the opportunity to say, I'd, I'd like to suspend the rules so we don't have to abide by that published agenda. Um, that has to be seconded and then voted off. So the, the sum of that is that you individual members have a lot of authority to make sure that you get through the underbrush, that you get to the things that uh you said uh in the agenda need to be dealt with. Um, and um, and it, it's, but ultimately uh each of those turns out to be a decision by uh, by the majority. So that's what I wanted to emphasize. Um, it's uh I, I've been dealing with parliamentary procedure for a lot of years now. And uh it's tends to be viewed as sort of a, I don't know, procedural gobble of words um that gets in the way of decision making. And I would argue quite the opposite. It actually facilitates decision, decision making uh if you use it. Um, and use it uh with, I, I guess what I'd call good faith. Um. I mean, it, it, sometimes it's hard to say, I have a point of order. It feels like you're challenging somebody. Um, but it's a way of, again, clearing out the underbrush. Let's get down to what we're really talking about and what the group really wants to talk about. If we're off onto something that is not what the group wants to talk about, you can find out very quickly uh with a point of order. Um, and there are lots of other procedures that Robert's rules aside from these five that also help with that kind of quickly getting to what the majority really wants to talk about. Uh, but these are ones that I, I have found over the years are really key and can be really useful if you'll, if you'll make use. So that's my, my sermon. But I, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. I would suggest that you appoint a parliamentarian for your meetings. Uh, and it, it could be Kim or Kim's replacement. Uh, um, it's, most of the time it doesn't, it, it really doesn't come up because uh the parliamentarian doesn't doesn't set the rules. The parliamentarian, the parliamentarian gives his or her opinion based on the rules, but that doesn't mean that the chair has to abide by that. For instance, on a point of order, the chair can decide, I don't, I don't care where you think the rules are. Uh, I'm gonna decide. And then the group has a chance to challenge that. So I, I think the parliamentarian can uh, and I, sometimes I will be, but uh, but the parliamentarian can uh help sometimes, but I don't think it's an essential role. Yeah, because, yeah, because they can say, I, you know, I want to, I want to challenge the, the ruling by the chair.
Uh, so, um, I, I got a little confused about, um. You said, when the, when somebody said point of order, the speaker has to stop. But then you said the speaker gets to decide.
That, that just on the, on the request for information. But let's say, um, uh, let's say you're, you're talking about something or other and and you can't quite figure out where she's going with that. You can say, I rise to a point of uh, in, or a point of information. Uh, I'd like to know where you got that information. And you actually don't address that to her. You address that to the chair. Uh, and, and then she can say, um, I, I'd like to finish my, my point. I'm not, you, you can't stop me. I have the floor and I get to continue my point. So and, and she may well cover your question in the course of that. Um, but that's the only time that the speaker uh has the ability to uh kind of direct the flow. Point of information or parliamentary inquiry.
What was these said at that moment?
Well, what we were just discussing was the request for information. Point of order could be anything contrary to your order uh, uh, to your uh uh, to the m- meeting procedures. Uh, you could say, I mean, that could be, uh, we uh uh, that's not a uh parliamentary rule that is open for debate. Uh, or, or that does require a second or any any uh point that you think where we're, we're as a group off track. You can, you can say, you know, sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. I have a point of order. Um, we're supposed to be discussing X and we're off onto Y. Um. Yeah.
So that's different than the point of information.
That's different than the point of information. You really are just seeking information. And on the point of order, it's the chair that makes that initial ruling. Uh, but, but that ruling can be challenged. With respect to a, a point of information, um, it's the speaker who says, you know, I want to finish or yeah, go ahead and ask your question and then I'll finish. Speaker has some just real discretion.
So anyone can make a point of order or only the chair can, with the chair.
Any, no, anybody can make a point of order, including the chair, by the way. That's an important point that, that sometimes people miss. Uh, that sometimes a chair is sitting there thinking, wait a minute, we're way off into the weeds. Um, I'm gonna make a point of order. Uh, and then he gets to rule on it. He or she gets to rule on it, but the group gets to challenge that rule. No, no, this applies to members. Yeah, this is just the members.
As well as ex officios.
Right.
Yeah. Which I've made, I, I think the last point of, of order I made was um when deliberation starts to happen before um there's any, you're really even heading into a motion and um and then, you know, again, from my perspective, it's about an objectivity viewpoint. So I haven't I, I've, I've been willing to make a couple of point of orders.
I, I should say, that's actually something that I think we need to cover in our rules at some point. It's not, um, in other jurisdictions that I've worked in, ex officio members couldn't make a point of order. Uh, no, that's a practice here. Um, and we probably need to clarify that in, in the rules. So we're uh.
I, I think the rules do clarify it. Um, and it would be interesting to look at what that, what that means.
Oh, well, if they did, I missed that. But anyway, it's worth clarifying.
I'd be happy to send you what I, what I've seen.
Okay.
When you say that you can ask clarifying questions before a motion is made, after the second you could deliberate. Sometimes clarifying questions might sound like it's deliberations. I mean, I guess how do you really know that it's, it's not going over like right on?
Well, you, you, you don't know. You've got to exercise your judgment, but recognize that, that if you are in effect, revealing a conclusion, and we're talking about ex parte hearing right now. If you're revealing a conclusion that you have reached before you've heard the evidence, when you're supposed to be making a decision based on the evidence only, that would be biased that can be challenged in court of appeals. I mean, in the uh, in Lubbock.
Does that, does that also apply to legislative matters as well? I mean, I think that's an important clarification because sometimes um you know, in a legislative matter, people might be here to speak on the matter and, and try to you know, try to influence the, the board to make a decision and um, I, isn't it, isn't it equally as um applicable in a legislative manner?
I would argue that it is, although it's not a legal requirement. I would say it's a requirement of kind of the group's credibility. Uh, you, you want to make sure that you're conveying to the, to the person testifying that you're actually. Person testifying that you're actually listening to them, you haven't made up your mind already, that they may have a reasonable point for you to consider. And you, in the back of your mind, you might be, you might be saying, that's, that's not a very good point. But you should wait and hear that person out and then weigh what they've said against against what else you're for.
Thank you, Dave.
So on the call for orders of the day. It appeared that that can happen at any point during the meeting.
Yes.
Okay, because it seems like that would be. That does appear to contradict. Well, yeah, it's just an odd thing, like you're following the agenda. What is, what is the purpose? If you're following the agenda, then at any point. By two thirds vote, somebody can say, maybe not.
Yeah, I mean, the idea is somebody, I I think the reason for it, let me start with that. Is the the audience or the, you know, the general public has has gotten information about the agenda, the order of the agenda. And they might say, well, number eight on the eight point two on the agenda, that's what I care about. I'm going to come at at seven forty-five instead of six forty-five because I don't, so I don't want to sit through the rest of them. And then if suddenly that's been moved up to number two on the agenda, they miss their opportunity. So it's part of kind of public involvement. So that everybody has expectations that are really set in, you know, you know, in the public information. Well, you're describing at the beginning. It could happen at the beginning and it'd be nice, probably would happen at the beginning, but it could happen at any time. Somebody, there there could be an issue that comes up. That the group feels is important enough to deal with right now. That you frustrate those expectations that the public have. Has and you just say, this is so important, we're going to suspend our rules and deal with this one right now. But that, again, is a decision that the the group would be making.
Yeah, that that's interesting because it's not. So that doesn't appear to be in the bylaws. So that's, or it almost appears to contradict the authority of the chair. Were the the bylaws impressed, like, well, the the chair had the authority of the official.
Right.
And so, but two thirds vote at any time.
Yeah.
And that's true of the council.
Yes, true of the council. And then, again, that's just, you know, to to provide some flexibility within these rules. They actually are, you know, reasonably flexible, but but they they also set out some pretty clear expectations. So people kind of know, you know, how to proceed, and that's why, that's why they work. Because it sets these expectations that everybody has, but allows this tweaking on occasion when you. You really, you really need it.
I don't see anything in the first pages about when you call the question, like if it's big, shut up. Then is that, that doesn't require a second, it's like these other actions that don't require a second?
No, that and that is covered in the in the longer piece under the basics of parliamentary procedures. I'd have to look, I'm not sure which page it's on right now, but if you, let me see. Call for previous question, this is on page eight or or of seven. It looks like about the eighth or ninth. Row down to call for the previous question. You can't interrupt the speaker, you got to have the chair recognize you. It does require a second. But it's not debatable. And requires a two thirds vote. Yeah, frequently what happens is pretty clear, everybody, everybody's in agreement, it's time for us to vote. We talked this to death, so let's let's get on with it, and somebody finally says, I call the question. Yeah.
I just want to say, I learned as presiding officer that one, one way that you can avoid that happening. I mean, if you want to avoid it, is just reminding during deliberation that that it's. Any second comments made by any member should be new information and not repeating or being argumentative with another member. And I I it just never happens at that point, that's my experience.
So I noticed that the council rules are a resolution. And and I was wondering, since it's a resolution and not an ordinance. How binding that makes them, and I also would ask you if our bylaws are binding. Or would they have to be adopted by the council to be like?
All right, on the first question. The. I lost your first question now. Well, resolution is still, is still binding. It's just that it doesn't, it's harder, it's easier to change than an ordinance. And it's not tracked as readily. We really need to actually get to the point where we are. We have our, all our resolutions in one document that we can easily track. That's a goal of mine. But right now, you got to do a sort of. You know, detailed search to find the resolutions. But a resolution is is binding. Your bylaws, I think under your procedures, you are allowed to establish your bylaws as long as they're not. In conflict with the council rules or in conflict with any state laws.
This is good, it means we can follow up and.
No, I, and I'll be happy to, if any of you have any questions, you know, you can email me too and and. And we will be having more training sessions that will get deeper into some of these subjects, but. These are the ones that I thought were really worthy of highlight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Our loss has met for its gain, for sure.
Okay, I'm going to, there will be, and then we'll start the rule that I have in meetings. The adjournment at six thirty seven P M. And let's call order the regular staff family machine available to me there twenty twenty three. That's six thirty seven P M. Thank you. And is Commissioner Buoclo available?
He is.
If he does either.
Yeah, are you present and you can hear Commissioner Buoclo? Buoclo?
You know, I, it's getting really, it's getting really jarbled there. I I was able to pick up because I was right next to the attorney. I was able to pick up most of what we were talking about and follow along in the packet, but I don't know if I'd be. I I honestly can't hear anybody else talking, the mic's just not picking it up.
Can you hear, is there a microphone?
Sorry?
Yeah, if you. Do you want to? I don't want to do that, too. You, you can go, Derek, Ali, if you want. Are you staying or are you going? Okay.
Sorry, I just froze pretty hard, I can't hear you. Oh, no.
Can you hear okay?
Guys, I I got to tell you, it's it's really like, there's, there's the sound part, and then it's also just the connection's so choppy. I feel like it's going to be pretty cumbersome, I don't want to, I don't want to be a problem for for the.
See you later.
So long, everybody.
They're still working to do things out and they have their first architecture review for two twenty three talent. And they've put that in condition, so if you're interested in knowing what the conditions are, we can. I'm happy to email those to any of you or all of you if you're interested in knowing what those are. It was a great meeting, they were really good about discussing the issues with the applicant. Went forward and. So I think it's going to be a really good move for talent. And it makes, it takes kind of all of us. Because they have so much passion for us, so it's really, I think it's, it's a good thing. And I'm really obviously managing for the teenagers as well, so I think we'll.
What is two two to approve?
So that's.
Okay, and so we're on to approval of that. Has everybody had a change of the minutes? I wanted to discuss, I. I wanted to, I want to check this day, like, this is a busy day on winter. February twenty eighth is our conditions, I just wanted to check. A Congress or two on the end of the event, is it okay? Four others in the match, you you guys, you're okay with that? I guess I'll be. I just wanted to check a couple things, I didn't get a lot, I'm going to check it through the. So I'll follow up on that. Sometime I do that, I just, I see something where the. Where, I mean, I said something, I want to make sure that the record is what we want to say, especially that. That that, that's obvious. And even though the audience can't confirm it. But the part of the March twenty five mission is there. I don't have a question on that. Everybody? Any suggested changes or? Otherwise, I won't, they're taking a motion.
I'm with approval of the minutes for from. March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
Motion in the second for approval of the minutes in March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
So I have some concerns about that.
Okay, for the minutes, I'll just give a voice. All in favor? Any opposed? In in your sentence, no, okay, in your, great.
Do you want to full architectural review committee? You, I think you should vote on all of them and see. You want? You don't want to review this next?
Yeah, I was going to do the next. Or take that for next. So any want to vote for that?
Yes.
Okay. Sure. All are taking a motion.
I I hope that we. That we move. Yeah, continue, continue, I would like to continue the architectural review committee meeting minutes from February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three to the next.
So, you have a meeting in the second, next, Commissioner David in the second. And any discussion? Would you like to speak to that? Okay, well. Do, I want to give a voice to all of you. So all in favor? Both? Any extension? You in the second? All right. You're doing that, I appreciate it. Other comments from non-gentlemen's, there are no other here. So we're going to spend this on. On the number five, finding the facts. For the denial of appearance, I think we've been dashed it under one, March twenty eighth, twenty point three.
So as you all have called, we have a variance of the previous meeting, which. Staff are permitted approval for, so we look before you today, because we just had verbal on the denial. Kind of, what we have, that is our findings for denial. And so we wanted to make sure that everybody reviewed those findings. And we're, and we initially approved those findings for denial. Because we didn't, because they weren't in writing, it wasn't necessarily official, didn't deny that I'm. So this is your time to approve the findings. For variance.
And it's, this is going to be a little confusing because some of the language that I sent in.